Okay, guys. Okay, fellows.
You raise the role to be called?
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna call the Middleton Council meeting for February 6th to order. And the first item on the agenda is the role call.
Our deputy city clerk, Michelle Marks, is here tonight.
Hi. Burke?
Present.
Olson?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Ettrick looks absent.
She has the flu.
Oh, no. Ramsey?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Teal?
Here.
And West?
Present.
There are a lot of people at D and J that have the flu, which is kind of ironic.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda, the comments from the citizens present, it's limited to three minutes per speaker. Anybody who wants to speak. Okay, so then who want to do the next item?
Joanna wants to speak.
Oh, go ahead.
I found this flyer in my mailbox, so I thought maybe I should say it out loud for the audience. We have a Tawana's All You Can Eat Pancake Breakfast this Saturday at the Spur Bowl from 7:01. Tickets are $7.00. Children five and under are free. You can get tickets from the chief, you can get it from Melissa, you can get it from Mike, you can get it from the mayor, and from me.
Or at the door.
Or at the door. And it goes to a good cause. One of our great causes is the Middleton Youth Center, so we give it back to the community.
Thank you, Joanna. Anyone else? Okay. So the next two items on the agenda, the approval of consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
So the motion is to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. The, now we are on to agreements, and the first item on the agenda is the annual monitoring agreement with Capitol Area Regional Planning Commission.
Move approval of agreement by finance.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's a no discussion, then the motion is to approve the monitoring agreement with Capitol Area Regional Planning Commission. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the Bishop Bay Pump Station Enforcement Task Order for Design and Permit Update.
Move approval is recommended by finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, if there's a no discussion, the motion is to approve the task order for design and permit for the Bishop Bay Pump Station Enforcement. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. The next item is the Fazan Branch Road Connector Water Main Task Order for Design and Permit Updates. It's more or less attached to the second one.
Move approval recommended by finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, if there's no more discussion, the motion is to approve the task order for design and permit for the connector water main. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So the next one is the Development Agreement for Tax Incremental Finance District Number Five Systems for Fazan Branch Creek LLC for Stagecoach Trail Apartments, 6620 Century Avenue.
Move approval is recommended by finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, if there is no more discussions, the motion is to approve the Development Agreement for Fazan for Stagecoach Trail Apartments. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes six to one. The next one is Stormwater Management System Maintenance Agreement with Stagecoach Trail Apartments, 6620 Century Avenue.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, so the motion is to approve the Stormwater Management System Maintenance Agreement. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes six to one. So the next one is the motion to reconsider revision to offer to purchase properties for a Fazan Branch Conservancy Trailhead to allow temporary access easement for the purpose of constructing a multifamily housing development on an adjacent parcel also.
So do we have to, like, make a motion?
Just move to reconsider.
I'd move to reconsider.
I will second that.
Um, I was, last meeting, we talked about, I was thinking, why are we buying it and then letting, just letting him use it? But then I've come to find out that it had to do with the grant and when, the timing of that, why we had to buy it at a certain time, is that correct, Abby?
The grant requires us to acquire the property by June 30th of this year.
Yeah. So that was one reason that I was thinking, but if we have to do it because of the grant. And there's a lot of amount, but he is going to do all the demolition of the buildings. So I, I just feel this is a fair compromise.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
How did we, so, yeah, how did we come, come to the $100 figure?
It's the starting point. I mean, it's from zero to 100 to whatever, so, and I think that that was fair based on the fact that he's rebuilding the buildings and...
No, I obviously think that's a little low. So, at $475,000, if we figure what his approximate interest is on 30-year at about 3% for the first year, you're looking at about $1,100 a month worth of interest. If you take vacant land and your value is at $475,000, the average cap rate is about 4.6. If you adjust that down, because it's not, it's, just for the sake of being agreeable, and you divide that up, you come up with an income base of about $9,500 for a year. So then you divide that out over the course of, of the 10 months, and you come up with about rent of about $950 dollars a month. Or, yeah, well, I would propose, I would propose $500 a month over the 10 months, would be my proposal.
But this is just to reconsider, that will be decided.
Right.
Yeah, that's all this, this motion is for, is to reconsider.
Just reconsider, second.
Just to bring it back, right?
To bring it back.
All right, well, then we should vote on whether or not we want to bring it back.
Okay, so the motion is to reconsider. All those in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes six to one. Now the next one is the revisions to offer to purchase properties by Fazan Branch Conservancy Trailhead to allow temporary access easement for the purpose of constructing a multifamily housing development on an adjacent parcel.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, so, any questions?
Uh, I've already made my argument, it's obvious.
Go make them, make it.
I'd like to amend the motion to be read for the 10 months to be at $500 a month.
Second.
Okay, so this is the amendment motion. Any...
Vote on the amendment first.
You want, what, any discussion? Do you have a discussion on that one?
Sure.
Yes, Susan.
I have a question for Abby. Has Jacob signed the deed yet? So does the city actually own this property?
No. The council originally approved the offer to purchase without the temporary construction access easement. That original offer to purchase was not signed by the city or by Jacob. So we are not under contract with Jacob to purchase those properties at this time. From our staff's feeling of this matter, the city does not have any use of the land during this time because the very earliest that we would be constructing improvements at the trailhead would be likely summer of 2019. Um, we also know that the city oftentimes gets temporary construction easements for construction of city sidewalks, which we don't typically pay for. Um, we think that it's in the city's best interest that the construction of this apartment project goes smoothly. And our, our thought is that if the land is being used for something, as long as it's restored to its initial condition, um, we don't see a problem with it if it can make Jacob's project go more smoothly, get the construction done in a more timely fashion, have trucks entering and leaving the properties at a safe location. We're supportive of the reconsideration.
Abby, also, Jacob will be demolishing the two buildings on our property.
Right.
The property we intend to buy.
That's correct.
And we're not paying for that demolition there.
Well...
Oh, no.
All Mayor Sullivan would disagree with you in terms of the purchase price.
Okay.
Okay, so it was in the purchase price.
Well, the, the amount that we are paying for the properties is $475,000. That is the exact amount that Jacob paid for the properties.
So what?
The $475,000 amount includes the demolition, which Jacob will be contracting for and, you know, overseeing the, the construction.
Okay. And then I have a question for Jacob, if that's okay. If this doesn't go through, are you going to, if we don't, if you're not happy with this price, would you back out of the deal of selling the land to the city?
I think you guys are getting a heck of a deal on it as it is. I mean, if you want to look at cap rates, if that's the discussion we're gonna have, I mean, I've had to give you the rents that were in place and what my net operating income was when I bought these as rental houses. I mean, at a 4.8% cap rate, the value on those properties is probably north of $600,000. You know, we're putting in storm sewer, in addition to doing the demolition, we're putting in a storm sewer line that is sized so that when the city decides to build its, build out the site, that it can use the, the storm line that we're putting in to accommodate its, its stormwater ponds. So I think there's other things that we're doing here that are worth bringing up.
Okay. And Mark, do you have any?
Yeah. Help me understand why these two items have to be tied together or did get tied together. The council made an offer to purchase, so why wasn't that signed originally? Why are we joining these two, conflating these two items so that we're put in this predicament? Why wasn't the offer to, to purchase done as an exclusive?
You think that's a question for you, then?
I think that, that when we were asked to, to do the demo, we realized that, hey, to do the demolition, after closing, we needed construction easement anyway, which was never accounted for. I didn't think we would have to go back to this to, to get a temporary construction.
Well, how is this any different than selling to a, a non-municipal third party? Right, if you sold it to somebody in the audience here, you would not be able to do what, what you're asking without some type of compensation. So the reality is, is that the city has an asset, we're asking this, we're trying to buy an asset. And from a financial perspective, you are coming in and you're taking value away from the city. And I think, so there's two issues here, right? The first is the offer to purchase, right, which didn't get done timely. The second is how to use that land to help you construct your buildings, right? So if you look at it logically, once the city acquires the property, it has an asset. And I think the citizens of Middleton deserve some type of return on that or some, it's an investment, right? And it's not fair to the citizens to let you have that, use of that property without some type of compensation. Now, we can argue it's worth $1,000 a month or, or $100 a month, but I think there's some compensation due here, right? So, to me, I'm a little bit upset that we didn't execute the purchase offer without all these contingencies.
I mean, yes, Susan.
Yeah, Larry, I have a question. And this is something I'm concerned, and it's independent of who the developer is. Without a signed purchase officer, that developer could back it up and sell the land to someone else.
Of course.
Such as another developer. And I know there were multiple developers interested in this property.
It's not, it's not legally obligated to the city at this point.
So without the signed offer, you might not have the trailhead. And we could have another apartment building there.
I think you're putting too much value on this trailhead, right? I, I understand it's a want, but it has to be what's good for the city and, and if, you know, overall, we have an offer to purchase, the entire thing, and the ask should be acted upon. And then separate and distinct from that agreement is however we decide to, to handle a construction easement. They are not, they should not be joined. This is two separate transactions.
That was an escape that got made, I don't know by whom. But we do not have the signed consent or offer to purchase.
So I'd make a motion that we separate these two, that we go back to the original purchase offer and get that taken care of, and then discuss how the, the construction easement goes forward. Should be, they should have been divorced to start with. So that's, I, I'd like to make that amendment or a substitute motion.
Didn't that motion already pass? I mean, that's what...
No, it hasn't passed. Obviously, you're trying to, all right, so...
It's not just, it's not signed, that was passed. The city council has passed that motion, I think, two city council meetings ago.
Yeah, Kardip, we passed the motion that we would purchase it. The developer hasn't signed the document.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's still an active...
But he doesn't have...
Offer.
...on of that.
Right.
That's my point.
Yeah, but that's, but what she might pass is other things that you're not signing.
Right, but we've, we have agreed to purchase.
Yes. So that was passed longer ago.
Then why are we even discussing this until our, our purchase offer is agreed upon? We shouldn't be talking about construction easements until our offer has been executed, until the contract's been executed.
Yeah, go ahead.
Larry, I mean, you do these things all the time. I don't think it's very uncommon for somebody, if I was selling the land to anybody, to ask for a construction easement on property that I'm selling. That, that is not something that I would consider uncommon in a real estate transaction at all. And, I mean, from day one, I operated in good faith with the city. I could have just made a larger project, but you guys have made it clear that you wanted that as a trailhead, which I've taken into account since day one, and am selling it to you at the price I paid for it, excluding the carrying costs for almost three years. So, you know, I think that we've been more than fair. I think $100 a month is $100 more than I'd like to pay. And, you know, frankly, the idea that these are two separate things just doesn't make sense.
They are separate transactions.
Well, I can tell you I'm not gonna do one without the other. So it is one transaction.
You remember this question?
So, you're telling us that if we don't give you the, the construction easement and $100, you're not gonna sign the purchase agreement and sell the property?
I'm not gonna...
So you're gonna, you, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not gonna sell the property without the construction easement. I'm not separating the two options. The, the two are one thing as far as I'm concerned.
Any further discussion? Yes, Howard.
We're gonna take a little different slant on it. Sean, Public Works Guru.
Wow.
That's, that's an upgrade from what I usually get.
Well, I don't have anything on the screen here to go by, so I was hoping I, um, as the premiere of many, many Public Works contracts throughout the year, where the city does projects, whatever they may be, is it relatively common to get a construction easement from adjoining land to get your problem solved and get out of there?
On a temporary basis, I would say yes. For permanent easements, where we're acquiring long-term interests in real estate, uh, those usually have some financial component to them, but for temporary construction easements, we often do not. So when we give a lane of a road or a sidewalk closure or Market West Apartments, where we were trading back and forth with equipment and space, uh, that's not got any financial component to it. We're just working together to try to get things done efficiently and in everyone's best interest.
Do you have some kind of a written agreement when you do that, or is this a handshake over a burger of Billy's green?
No, we often have a really simple agreement that says who's gonna be doing what, for what length of time, that they're gonna put things back in at least as good a condition as they found them, uh, you know? And so it, it sort of becomes a, a written, but very brief agreement of who's gonna do what.
So you, more often than not, expect something like this to happen?
It comes up relatively frequently where we have to work together.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussions? So the motion is to, this is the amendment, motion to, uh, rather than $100, do you use a 4 and 15? What about the motion?
But other motions.
I agree with it. So that's the motion. So if you are ready, working, yes, that will be a favor of that motion, all those...
I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Okay.
And if this motion fails, we go back to the original motion?
Yes, yes.
That's right, yes.
Burke?
No.
No.
Olson, no. Sullivan?
No.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Teal?
Nope.
West?
No.
Okay, so the motion fails. So now we are back to the original motion. Any further discussion on the original motion?
Is there a way to put, um, the, uh, Mark, you're, I, you're onto something which I think is worthy of consideration, that these are really two separate things that shouldn't be strung together for this particular purpose. Is there a way to put some kind of, I'm trying to think of a contingency on the approval of the, of the...
We already acted on this, right? So we have an approved, approved purchase offer.
Right, we've got...
So that needs to get executed, and that's one transaction. And then, once that's done, I think the council will be more than happy to talk about construction easements. So we shouldn't be hamstrung because the developer wants both tied together. They are two separate transactions. We've approved the first one. We should get that executed before we go lower.
What would you propose during tonight?
Reject the motion. We have an offer on the table. It's either accepted or rejected.
Susan.
I think this comes down to, do we need the trailhead?
Absolutely not.
And I very much disagree with you. We need a parking lot. We currently have, and unfortunately, the owner of Common Ground, a new restaurant that we would like to get in place and have it succeed, has, the owner of that restaurant, whatever business has been there, has for years had their parking lot filled up with people using the conservancy. That's not right for the city to have residents using a commercial establishment's parking lot. The other thing is, this is a unique site, and is an ideal site for a trailhead. I can't think of another one around the conservancy that we would have access to the land. And I think, you know, if we vote this down, we are denying the trailhead.
Any other discussion?
How is it denying the trailhead if you've made an offer, right? Again, coming back to this, there are two transactions here.
We've made an offer, but it has not been accepted at the time.
Okay, so, real choice then. We can either accept the counter offer or reject the counter offer. These are two transactions.
The city, the city would not sign, would not sign on the documents until the developer signed them, correct? There's an order of which, how you do that.
I prefer, Larry, on how a tran, real estate transaction takes place.
Well, I would expect simultaneous execution in this situation where the terms have been negotiated carefully over a substantial period of time. Is there a reason why the city hasn't got, Jacob, is there a reason why you guys can't manage to solve this problem real quick by signing? I don't understand why.
I think at the last minute, you guys asked me to do the demolition, which we got in there.
Yeah.
And the access easement that we're talking about didn't get put in there. And so that was, you know, on a, let's just say we got that like a Friday and looked at it Monday and it got missed. So you guys, you guys are kind of countered with do the demolition, and, you know, frankly, it didn't, until we went that first time, it didn't really click that this was something that we needed.
It's Tuesday night, February 6th. You've got sort of commitments that you have to make, and the city has commitments they have to make. You're trying to tell me that between now and maybe next week sometime, the city couldn't get together with you and you could resolve this problem, so that we don't have to do this?
This will get resolved tonight.
Yeah, we don't have to do, we have to do a doggone thing and this can sit.
Yeah, we do. We won't, we, we pass this and we're done with it.
Or reject it and we're done.
Reject it.
And we're not done with it.
And we're not done with it, and both of these, both the city can sit and the developer can sit and play who's gonna blink first.
Okay, yes, Susan.
Yeah, I've got one other reason to do this, and this is for the people that live west of the development. So if Jacob has to do the staging on the west side and essentially his parking lot, it's going to have a bigger impact on those residents. They're immediately adjacent to it than on the east side, where the only adjacent resident is the city's conservancy.
Explain that to me. How is it an impact on the, on residents? There are still ordinances that the, the developer has to follow. He has to stay on his property. He can't violate any noise ordinance or time ordinances.
It's visually looking at all the materials for an apartment building right there up to the property lot.
I think they've probably figured that, but things are gonna change.
Yes, but it's much nicer. Have you ever lived in a development where houses are being built?
I have.
It's not nice to have houses being built next to you. It's better to have all that moved away as far as possible. This would be to those residents, Susan Brey especially, for her to have that staging on the south side, on the east side.
Okay, you have more to say?
Has anybody downtown complained about the construction for... Has anybody downtown complained about the construction for the middle center?
Yes.
Yes.
Lots, lots of.
Construction, the staging?
The staging on their own property.
So was anybody complaining that it's visually unappealing?
It's unappealing.
That's what you're saying, that's what you're trying to intimate that, is that because there's a bunch of construction that you're...
I'm trying to be nice to the people that live right next to this on the west.
Okay, any other discussion? So the motion is the revision to offer to purchase properties by pleasant grants conservancy trailhead to allow a temporary access easement for the purpose of constructing multifamily housing development on an adjacent parcel. So let's have a roll call vote.
Okay. So everybody understands what voting yes means and what voting no means?
We do.
Everybody understand?
Purchase agreement with the temporary construction easement as outlined in the council packet.
Okay. Burke?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Ramsey?
No.
Char?
Yes.
Teal?
Yes.
And West?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes for review.
Five, five to two.
Five to two.
Five to two.
Five?
Number eight.
Five to two, I'm sorry.
Howard didn't vote the way you thought he would.
Oh, okay. I apologize, so five to two.
Okay, Mike.
Because that's going to make assumptions, so. Okay, so the annual, this is item number eight, annual agreement between Milton Tourism and Phil's Empowerment.
So it's all recommended by finance.
Any discussion? How do the favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, so the next one is CSM and flat, and this is the replat of lots number four and five of Heinzwood. Glimmering flat and specific implementation plan gave residential development. So we did motion. Let's write. No, but we are voting on, right?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Kathy Esther, are these four and five or five and six? The lot.
It's four and five.
That's what the plat says.
You want to say anything?
I don't understand the question you said.
Well, here it says, um, for lots five, five and six, one through four, that these, these two are five and six.
I think, no, this is, I know what the issue is. So the original plat, this is a, a different plat. It will be a different plat. And so the original lots for four and five, that has nothing to do with the number of five and six. It's just a, they, they aren't related to each other.
So this is, that's out for lots four and five.
Right, that's the existing, that's the existing land description.
Okay.
Existing plat.
To create a six lot.
Correct, which will have, because of six lots, there will be a five and six.
Okay.
As well as a one through four. So the, the numbers are not related to each other.
So what we have is, they all say one, five and six.
So these are lots four and five of Heinzwood's, and they are replatted to have six different houses, right?
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
Is that clear?
Okay. So I had a motion of either second.
Second.
Okay. So everybody understand what we are voting on? Any discussion, further discussion? Okay, how do the favor of replat of the lots four and five of Heinzwood's say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. So the next one is the ordinances, and this is the ordinance to create an affect board in the city of Milton.
In its first reading, we didn't put it on the agenda correctly? So this is, should be first reading unless the council weighs it.
So I have a question then. Um, but LNO has not seen this yet. I would make a refer to LNO. Second.
Okay, so.
I think it's a great idea. I just think that that's the prerogative of that committee, yeah.
I think that's a, like, a good answer, doesn't it? Okay, so the motion is to refer this to LNO, and any further discussion? How do the favor of this motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously for referencing to LNO. Next one is planning exonerating. The first item is the general implementation plan, Trace to mixed-use development, including Milton Market, seven six to Lisa Lane, Abby.
Um, the developer is here to make a presentation on this item, but I just had a couple of quick comments. The previous recommendation that had come out of Plan Commission to the common council had several contingencies, and many of which were above and beyond normal contingencies for a rezoning to GIP. For example, the last time that this was before you, there were contingencies for building architecture and materials to be decided at the next phase of the rezoning, the SIP. And there was also a contingency for a shared parking study. And I think that the exact words out of one, at least one council member's mouth at that time was that it was not ready for primetime. I believe it was because of the level, the number of, the number of contingencies that had been recommended by the pitch. So since the last time the council saw this request for rezoning, some of the bigger contingencies were removed. Now, the recommendation coming out of Plan Commission is for rezoning to GIP, and it's very much in line with the, the level of review that we're at now with the Tracea project, similar to what we've done on other projects like Marco West Apartments and Middleton Center. The Workforce Housing Committee previously had reviewed the rent structure for this project in July of last year and found that the rental rates were affordable to households earning around eighty percent of the area median income. But you'll recall that this project is strictly market rate housing. It doesn't include any workforce housing or income restricted housing. The, the rental rates, I can't remember if I already said this, but the rental rates are similar to Market West rental rates. The phasing for this project, which is two hundred and sixty-two units of housing in a four to six month period, is also similar to Market West Apartments. Market West opened last year with two hundred and forty units in a six month period. So very similar from that standpoint. One additional thing that I wanted to note is that our, our planning staff has discussed this, and we, we would not support the use of this land exclusively for multifamily residential development. The reason is that the apartment or area concept plan that was adopted by the city showed this area as a combination of mixed-use residential and medical office. We really don't want to see a large land area in the city that's strictly for one land use, like multifamily housing. We want people to live in proximity to services. And we, the city has approved one hundred and seventy-eight new units of multifamily housing on the south side of Lisa Lane. So we really want to ensure that these residents have walkable access to services, which is why when we first started meeting with the developer for this project, we strongly recommended that that first floor include, you know, service-oriented retail, some other use other than strictly apartments. I also wanted to point out that the rezoning document was not included in your council packet. It also was not included in the Plan Commission packet. It's drafted. It just did not get attached in our system. So if there is a favorable vote tonight on this item, that rezoning ordinance would be included on the next common council, um, agenda, two twenty. And the recommendation coming out of Plan Commission was for approval to GIP rezoning with the conditions of a TIA to be completed by the developer, and we require the developer to cover the cost of any improvements that are recommended in a TIA. Satisfaction of engineering staff recommendations, a provision of a different bow wood material than the one currently shown in the plans, which the developer can address. There are material samples here up against the wall. And also that at the SIP phase, stormwater management would be approved by Water Resources, landscaping plan would be approved, and final materials approved by Plan Commission and Common Council as well as the fire district. So I'll turn it over to the developers so that they can present the project to you.
Thank you, Abby. Robin?
I love the new agreement. That's really exciting. Hi, I'm Robin Farrell. Um, I, staff recommended that I actually take you through kind of a progression of the site, what we've done with staff to work, um, and, and their consultants with Vanderwall to work through the site, and then open it up for questions. I know that you received an email from one of my competitors today. Most of the things that he talked about that I would claim aren't correct will be covering in the presentation, but if there's anything else that you would like to ask, I'm open for any kind of question or dialogue as well, so.
Oh.
Really?
Oh. He doesn't like me.
I think I like you better now. And in the meantime, I brought my architect along as with me as well to answer questions, but I'm going to have him put up some of the new sample ideas because Plan Commission said that you guys could provide feedback on materials as well, on colors and materials. So Middleton Market is the name of the market. Our working title for the apartments itself is Tracea at the Market, and we're still working through if that will work or not, but that's where we're headed right now with the name. Staff did ask us to rename the apartment portion of the project because they didn't want us to conflict or be confused with Market West. This is the site we're looking at. So it's the bowling green softball fields, but also including the empty lot on the corner of Lisa Lane and Laura Lane, as well as where Purple Colla Organics is currently located on Laura Lane. If you look at the site today, that's, actually, this is a little earlier. Obviously, there's no snow there, but that's where Jacob's first building has gone, so directly across the street to give you some sense of scale and how the neighborhood's kind of coming together. Jacob has actually written a letter of support for our project to the city as well. This is the concept plan originally. So where we are being located is in the mixed-use, I can do it from here, but you guys can't see it anyway, so, yeah. The larger, oh, the larger mixed-use, oh, that's awesome. Look at this. The larger mixed-use residential lot here. Am I doing that one right? Yes, Lisa Lane. And then, um, we, we are going into part of the medical office portion, as you'll see when we, we look at the plan in a moment. So this was our original concept. It was actually trying to carve out these two future medical sites, one here and one up above where the Purple Colla Organic building is today, and having kind of a larger central courtyard. We got a lot of feedback from your city planners and from Vanderwall that they really didn't want this kind of central corridor. They were worried about, would it fall into disrepair? Would it feel welcoming enough to the community? And there was really a concern about the super block, that these blocks weren't really designed for walking and walkability. And so they wanted to see us change that to kind of have more breakups and more future planning on the site as other things redevelop within this area. This was actually their concept plan that they came up with. So, oh, I went too, one too far. So adding a public street within the middle, actually extending the building out so that the med, we build out the ancillary medical services commercial portion right away into that corner, and then setting aside this future medical up in the corner, making the market a prominent part of the Lisa Lane exterior and having connection to that street. And so from their plan, we switched to this. So we have pulled out the retail building. When we say retail, we'll talk more about it later, we really mean commercial. I'm not talking about dress shops going in there. We're talking about a wellness center, chiropractic care. And this market building being actually just a two-story building from the exterior, and the apartments are actually set behind it. And then there's, this road is set aside from the city, from Public Works. We have enough easement on both sides to eventually make that a public road if at some point we want a public road through that site. And we will have, we have offered an easement through there, as well as this, the road here that connects off of Lisa Lane that doesn't go anywhere currently, that has fifty-five feet set aside for the public easement with the understanding that the sidewalk and apron would come from the adjacent landowners if at such time we were ready to move to a public road on that site. So if you look at this in context of what's going to happen with the rest of this district, you'll see here, we have the future Mariter Site, which I hear is twenty nineteen. Let's, I'll keep our fingers crossed. Currently, the Meadow Ridge Apartment Complex and what Oak Ridge, which is in, under construction currently. And then you see the footprints of our buildings to kind of see the scale and what we're proposing within the site. The anchor of this project is a food hall. So it's different than a public market. Many of you may have seen the article in this Cap Times comparing what we're doing here in Middleton to what they're doing in Madison. We're talking about working with established food vendors. We actually already have two that have, three actually now, that have approached us wanting to come into the space, selling product, produce, meats, wines, prepared foods, an operating bar within the space, so you can eat the prepared foods there, or you can take them home. And outside, there'd be a segregated area to have seasonal stalls in the summer, regional produce being able to come in, and then a winter Christmas market that would operate in January and February, a lot like Chicago or Oostwood or European-style Christmas markets that operate within that compound in the, in the winter season. That is the fastest-growing retail segment. It's kind of what food courts and malls were years and years ago. So I always compare that of, we had multiple food courts when I was in high school, while soon municipalities and cities will have multiple food halls. Seattle, which has the Pike Place Market, and it's the big place to be, has five other regional markets and smaller markets that serve the neighborhoods themselves now. We'll also have community spaces. There's a community room within the market for cooking classes and events. There's a performance space that will be within the market footprint itself for acoustical music. There'll be a playground on-site and an outdoor beer garden for summer as well within the site, pending approvals. The commercial space is, like I said, it's intended to be ancillary to the medical services. We have an LOI signed with a wellness center. We look at chiropractic service. We've been talking to a dialysis center. We've been talking to a veterinary clinic, actually. This, the commercial space will have visibility from the market, from Lisa Lane, from Laura Lane, and slightly from the bout line. Won't have signage to the bout line, though. We are not, our pricing for the commercial space was based on a market study conducted, an independent third-party market study. We are not using TIF dollars to subsidize commercial spaces within the market or the commercial spaces. The apartments and lots are really meant to be complementary to the affordable and senior housing on Lisa Lane. Twenty-five percent of our units will be two-plus bedrooms, so we are focusing on the need in this market for family housing. We do not have a lot of two-and-a-half bedrooms, two bedrooms with lots, three bedrooms, that people have told us there's a need for. We're also spending a significant amount of time and energy doing a sustainable design. We will have in-house composting. We'll have rainwater recycling. All the lighting will be LED. We'll have high-efficiency heating. We have solar panels on the roof. And the building will be Energy Star certified. The building will be Green Build Home certified. So this is the basis about where our consulting came and our development company grew out of. We believe this will be a landmark, sustainable building for the city from a residential standpoint. Finally, we've spent a lot of time working with council and plan and the design committee and making sure that the design is significant for what we're trying to provide. And we really listened to the feedback, I think, from what design in particular and some of the council and Plan Commission members have talked about. So we spent a lot of time trying to make building differentiation, make corners and, and bump outs so people can see different locations within the building. It's supposed to stay extruded because... It's supposed to stay extruded, because that's the architectural term. So we've extruded entries and entrances to make it clearly defined areas within these buildings. We've given clear access, public access to the commercial space and spent a lot of time with connections between, say you're at the wellness center and you want to go to the market, you need an easy and convenient and way to get between the locations. So we have cut-throughs through all the buildings. They'll be clearly delineated, public pass-throughs within the buildings. We've spent a lot of time on the architectural front to make sure the frontage to the street is interesting. The market itself will have multiple access points, both from the sidewalk, from the parking area, and from the rear parking area. And we spent a lot of time on that connection to the street, both in the retail side here, as you see, and then also on the commercial side. It actually, the land actually goes down as you go down Laura Lane. You don't notice it as much when you're in your car, and we are raising the building slight, because, slightly, because we're on a glaciated lake. So the water table in some areas is four feet from where the parking structure is. So we are raising the building. That's a significant portion, so making sure that connection works between the commercial space and raising the building on that corner was a lot, we spent a lot of time working with staff to make sure that worked. I'm really excited about the project. I hope that we've answered most of your questions, but I'm here to talk through anything else. I have all the materials again that we're looking at, and Eric also has larger-scale layouts of the images if anyone wants to see those, if you want to maybe put those out on the chairs, so, of the site and of the building and of the project.
So this is just kind of showing where all the different views are being taken from, shows the pass-throughs and everything else for the project. The revisions to the siding per the meeting a couple of weeks ago, I actually think, sorry. Not used to people wanting to hear me talk. One of the big questions at the last meeting was, does this look too fake? Is this, is this kind of like a fake wood? So they'd asked us to come through with more of a solid color version of this, and Robin was able to get the samples from the manufacturer, and really, personally, I really like these a whole lot. So I think something more along these lines is what we're looking for more specifically, something like this that'll kind of bring out that red tone that we're showing in some of those views. The other question was, is this too blue? So got a sample here, which is more representation of what we're showing in those 3D views as The metal siding is a corrugated metal siding, so we won't have oil canning issues like you would with a typical flat panel metal siding. And like Robin said, we've got, we've got cut-throughs with the building so that you can easily access inside and out throughout wherever you need to go, from wherever you park on the site to get to the different retail spaces or commercial spaces. The huge entry corner really draws the attention towards that main entry and gives it some hierarchy while giving it some architectural interest as well. And we've, like you said, extruded and articulated all the corners and entry points to be very unique so that as you're walking around the site is, there's a clear wayfinding, you know, it's instinctual, not something that has to be dictated to people with all this little signage and everything else throughout the site. You're just going to know where to go through those architectural articulations. And if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to attempt to answer them.
Plan Commission has spent a lot of time on this one, especially they would lead and Kurt Bosson and some of the others, so. Yeah, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
The picture that's on our screen right now, I don't know if this is the way the perspective is, but is the one on the right, is that like vaulted or is that straight? I can't tell.
Oh, that's the perspective on the, on the computer that's kind of coming at you. It looks like it might be vaulted, but it, it's lofted, but it's not pitched or anything. If you go to here, look at, like, this view here is, you can see how it comes across straight. This view, which doesn't have such a dynamic.
That's the one I see.
It doesn't have such a dynamic angle. It's just, it's the angle of the camera. The other thing that we did from a previous design was significantly increase the amount of stone on those main facades, brought them up, you know, two stories plus three stories in certain areas, which really gives us architectural significance to, to those elements and really rooting that in a, in a more solid material.
Is that stone or is it the brick over there?
Or, um, stone or brick, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's, that, that specific brick is the exact brick that we're proposing. Obviously, that's not, it's not mortar and there's not all that stuff in it, but that, that's the actual brick that we'll be using.
Okay, yes, Howard.
By the way, I do agree with you that the second brown panel does look a little sus- looks like T-111 siding, if you ask me. You're going to do this in how many phases? These are, this is a G I P. This is not a design show. This is a G I P, sorry.
So how we intend to bring the systems online, if you look at this diagram here, is the market comes first. So we will bring the market online, and that will open actually as quickly as we can because we think it's good for the neighborhood and the area. We'll pour the foundations of this building, but this building will sit. We'll come back over here and do the retail and this building. If the fire marshal allows us to, we will bring this building on in two phases. If not, we'll bring it on in one phase, and then we will come back and open this building as a second phase.
So you're talking about four phases, five phases?
If we could, we'd love to do it in four phases, but a lot of that will come down to firewalls and what the fire marshal will allow us to do. Worst-case scenario, we'll bring it on in three phases.
How long time span will that take?
So I think six months minimum, a year if we get in-ground later than I want to. So the later we get in-ground into the summer, will probably take a year to bring both buildings online just because of the seasonality. Bringing something on November and December doesn't make any sense in our market, so.
That's true. The diagram you had, which shows the perspective of the interior dome in front of the dome, which has its road in the middle of it, which I believe you commented about, it's white enough to become a public thoroughfare, public street. Tell me, Abby, why, why are you not asking for that to be that way right now?
We had a lot of conversations about the road and, and whether we, whether the city would eventually want that to become a public road, whether that road would eventually serve other developments beyond just the Middleton Market development. I think it went to Public Works and Plan Commission, and it was battered around a couple of times. And ultimately, the recommendation was that it would be built to public standards, but that it would be maintained privately, and so, you know, the developer would be responsible for maintenance, snow plowing. The developer would also have the ability to close the, the private street for events. So she talked about the winter market. They would have the ability to, to shut that down. We would put into a land reservation the, the right-of-way that would be needed for a period of 25 years. So if at any point from, you know, date the construction begins or date that the land reservation is entered into with the city, 25 years, we decide we want it to be public, it would be turned over to the city at no cost. I think that it was just a feeling of Public Works especially, that at this time, it's not really needed to serve the general public, so they would prefer to keep it private.
Okay, the decision to turn it over to the, to municipal purposes would lie solely with the city?
With the city council.
So some Tuesday, we decided to do that, you call them up and say, guess what?
We don't have the legal agreement worked out yet, but that's the way that we've discussed it.
That's basically what I'm trying to get.
Yep.
If we decide to do this, not, we go, you know.
Right, and it would be turned over to the city at no cost to the city. It would be a decision of the city council.
Susan.
Yeah, I guess I've had several people, areas in my district where people are wanting developer-built streets turned into city streets, and they weren't built to standards. So this truly will be to Public Works standards.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we've adjusted the building actually on the site, and actually, that angle of that one building, we adjusted slightly to accommodate an extra couple of feet to make sure that all those clearances are in place.
Yes, sufficient structure for the road, so on city streets. Darby's trucks.
There we go.
Right, so, so what we looked at was, there's sufficient right-of-way to meet a city standard width. We'll have to ensure that the depth of base course and asphalt are to city standards. But you can see all this right-angle bade parking off to the side. That'll likely need some reconfiguration if we decide to make this a city street. We may decide to go to angle parking or some variation of that. So I, I wouldn't say that we would take this and just change the name and say, hey, now you're a city street. You know, it's going to have some traffic flow parameters that we'll have to look at and that might need some reconfiguration or sassing, but at least.
It's not going to be like rebuilding a road.
We wouldn't have to start over from the clay up, yeah.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Susan.
Let Robert go.
What about Robin?
This is maybe more for Abby, actually. Just really quickly, this is from an email I got earlier today, just a question. You, you mentioned Market West is kind of a comparison earlier.
It's really the most similar project that we have in scale to this project. It has 240 units of housing, and of course, there's no commercial, so it's not a mixed-use project, but otherwise, it's, it's very similar.
And it went online when?
One building opened July 1st, one opened September 1st, and one opened December 1st. So there were 80 units per building phased over a six-month period.
And how, I know it, no retail component, but how full are the, the, how, how, how much vacancy rate is there in the current Market West? Do we have an idea?
Well, we know, we know that in the fourth quarter of last year, the M G M rental vacancy rate was 2%. I guess the third phase of that probably would not be included. I've heard, I've heard that the, the, the units are filling up very quickly. I know that the first phase was full before they opened it. So I think that that project is doing very well.
Does that have some workforce housing units?
Right. Twenty, twenty-three units are workforce housing units. The rest are market rate in that project.
And those are only at all type?
They are.
So Abby, continuing this, it's not just this development, it's other development that are coming online as well. So a year from now, you've got these 263, you've got at least two or three other developments that are coming online. The question I have is, is there enough demand to absorb this supply?
Right, and we, we've talked about that a lot at our workforce housing committees. We have some really good experts that sit in those meetings and have very long and detailed discussions about the, the rental market. The sense that I get from, from the, you know, architects, developers, and housing experts in the room is that construction prices are very high right now, and because of that, they believe that when the market starts to fall for, for multifamily housing, banks are going to stop lending for it, and it will happen very quickly because of construction costs. So at least the feeling that I get from those experts in the room is that the market is going to make a correction, and we are not going to be seeing projects coming forward for approval because they won't be able to get financing.
So what you're betting on is that you can get built in the market before this, and crashes?
Well, we rely on.
It's not just this development, but, but all these multifamilies are betting that they can get financed and built before.
I wouldn't say crashes. I would just say before the demand starts to level out. I mean, there were many years where no new units were coming online, and now I think what's happening is there are developers that are doing a lot of catch-up to, to make up for the demand. And we have a real serious housing affordability issue in Middleton right now, where we have people that are occupying units, that are aging units, that can afford a higher-priced unit, but because there's not enough supply, they're occupying units that really should be occupied by people who need a more affordable unit, and because of that, it's really causing an affordability crunch. The city adopted the housing, the workforce housing strategy, which said that, that the city would have a goal to create 295 more, just strictly affordable units in the next three to five years. And we're, you know, I think we decided we were about 66% of the way there, but that's just for affordable units. That's not even looking at the additional demand that there is for market rate housing. I do know that the developer has done a market study and can probably speak to the market better than I can, so.
One of the unusual aspects of the loan product that we're using is they require us to update our market study every six months, so we are never behind a trend. And so we just recently updated it at the end of December and still. So that market study goes and looks at everything in process and everything in Middleton and the surrounding Dane County region, talks about population growth, growth of employment base, and current demand. You know, a 2% market rate isn't healthy for anybody. It's not, it's healthy for me, I like it, but most of the time, it's not healthy for renters, it's not healthy for a city. And so even with the current stream of everything that they've looked at in December, so this was a current look, we're still not at capacity. I wouldn't want to put something in that is going to struggle and fight to put people in the units. I believe Middleton is a really strong housing market and has a huge, strong housing need. Do I want 20 of these? Probably not, but I do believe, and I believe that our market study proves that there's still a strong need for housing within the city.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Susan.
Robin, how long do you plan to hold this building?
A really long time, Susan. I mean, our, you may know that Trista's for sale, but it's not my piece. So my business partner in Trista is 77, and so she wants to retire. And in fact, I think we have an equity buyer for her, to buy her out, because we intend to hold our assets for a long time, and we build them that way. And our partner on this deal is actually Cardinal Capital Management out of Milwaukee, and they have a long history of supportive housing and holding their assets for a very, very long time. I was actually a green consultant to them first before we actually started partnering on projects, so I don't intend to sell, so.
Okay, other questions? So I need a motion.
I'll move ahead.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Abby.
Plan Commission. Approval is conditioned on or contingent with or includes all the Plan Commission comments as they have, having to be satisfied, correct?
Plan Commission and engineering staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Any major?
Well, there's a T I A that's required.
Yeah, that's.
And we, we have the funds in escrow, but we haven't initiated the T I A because we're waiting, we wanted to wait to, until we got the G I P sorted out. And then stormwater management plan, that's pretty typical, that happens at the S I P phase. The only one that I would say is maybe not quite as far along as other projects is the landscaping plan. And I referred to our G I P, I looked back in our zoning ordinance today to look at the requirements for G I P, and it- And it does say a general landscape treatment plan. What we have received is a, a plan that's showing that the developer can meet the point requirements. And also, the landscape architect came to the Plan Commission meeting and discussed the types of plantings that would be included in the project. And then the final materials being approved by Plan Commission and planning council. But really, nothing in the recommendation that came out of Plan Commission is out of line with a typical GIP approval.
Okay, yes.
Robin, could you talk to us about the materials and why you selected them?
Sure, so being a green builder, I try to provide materials that have sustainability behind them. So we are using manufactured brick that actually uses recycled content material. And I've used that successfully in other places, so that's what you'll see on the brick, the stone course work. The majority of the siding is actually LP Smartside that's actually made in Wisconsin. And the reason I use, there's a couple of reasons I use Smartside over Hardy Plank, which is its competitor and you'll see on other projects, is it's not a mined product. So Hardy Plank is actually made with crystalline silica and has mined components. It's a cement board, it's made of cement products. And so crystalline silica is actually carcinogen. And so there's actually new OSHA requirements out now for handling and managing Hardy Plank because of the cancer and it causes mesothelioma, just like the asbestos does. So we see it as the next kind of asbestos product. And so I really wanted a product that's made from wood. It has a terrific warranty. LP has been really great to work with. It, the product itself is warranted for 25 years. The finish is also warranted for 25 years. And the product that we had issues with in Trista, which was also a Smartside product, they don't manage, they won't let you buy anymore. So they, they actually repaired ours. We completely replaced all the siding. LP stood beside that at Trista and replaced all that smooth siding for us because of installation failure, not product failure. And so that's why we've gone with the rocker product and the product that we feel won't have as many nail holes and it will have systems like the, this is actually a system that it fits into so you actually don't have nail, exposed nail holes within the product.
Any other questions?
Do you, what kind of percentage of the tin would you say would be on this?
That's an accurate question.
Yeah, I was going to say 5% to 10% of, of the, of the facade is the actual metal siding. So it's just used in accent portions and highlighted areas just to have a variation of the material throughout the facade.
Oh, and that's.
Yeah, it never hits the ground. It's always up and kind of away from any kind of damage that could happen at grade level or, or anything like that. It's, it's going to, pretty much a lot like Trista where, you know, it's.
Fourth and fifth story.
Yeah, yeah.
So 5% to 10% maybe?
Yeah, right.
Okay, other questions? Okay, so the motion is to pass the general implementation plan for Cresta mixed-use document, including the Middleton Market. Are those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes, 51. So the next one is.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Specimen implementation plans, gateway and range of document. We just prove this yes and that.
More approval?
Document by the Plan Commission.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion, okay? So the motion is to prove yes IP for the gateway, gateway to the drop matrix as done by them. What is that, 2105 not paid? Are those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes, 51. Congratulations and proposals. Agreement of common council member to be downed on, rather, for the.
And the council member is?
Yes. Who is, who would like to be on that committee?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Olson.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Are those in favor of having Kathy Olson as a common council representative, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion to adjourn. Oh, no, I think, yes.
I have, there's a question, I guess this goes back to planning and totally, really quickly. Trista, we put that on, we, we tabled the whole TIF agreement thing.
Back in November.
Back in November. When does that get readjusted or we look at?
So you want to make a motion to untabulate?
I don't know, I don't know the process on this.
I need the process, man. Yeah, it is. The, because it's not on the agenda, the motion to remove it from the table is in order, but that's all that could happen. There is no further discussion about it. Once it's untabled, then the normal process can take place.
So it can be on the next agenda then?
Sure.
Okay, so is that your motion, motion to untabulate?
I would make the motions, seconded then.
Okay, so you've seconded it then? Okay, so any discussion? Are those in favor of untabling the tech agreement, or just, say aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes, 51. Okay, now motion to adjourn. Okay, are those in favor, say aye? So we are.